Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we begin our meeting tonight, our first item that we have is under recognition is the EP Rock Elementary Program of Promise Award. I think Tony's going to present that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have with us Amy Hamburg, Principal of EP Rock Elementary School and Kelly Curtis, School Counselor at EP Rock. Amy and Kelly are with us tonight because the Wisconsin School Counselor Association recently awarded EP Rock Elementary School statewide recognition by conferring a Program of Promise Award for their work developing the Support Personnel Accountability Report Card for Wisconsin. That's a mouthful. We call it the Spark W. The Program of Promise Award is only issued to an elite number of schools that submit a Spark W that fulfills stringent expectations set by the Wisconsin School Counselor Association. Their Spark W will be shared with the state legislators as an example of how school counselors are making a difference for our students. And on February 20th, at the Wisconsin School Counselor Association's annual conference in Madison, Kelly will represent EP Rock Elementary School as they're recognized for their Spark W report during their president's brunch. Kelly and Amy, could you just share a few words about your Spark W report and some of the metrics that you used?
Yeah, it is, the Wisca has really promoted the use of data throughout the state with school counselors so that we can demonstrate the effectiveness of school counseling programs and how it makes a difference for students. And so, it's really a very prescriptive process and you can see the report there. This is page one. I'll give you one example just from this first page. There are several items of data that I collected and interventions that I implemented. But for instance, the new student problem solving skills, that graph there. I took a group of new students, because we have a number of new students at EP Rock. And we know, in notice from the past, that it takes a while for new students to acclimate to a new school, to understand our problem solving strategies that our, you know, regular students know very well. So I took them through a new student kind of orientation series of six weeks. And so I started with a kind of a pre-test at the beginning of the six weeks of instruction. And then taught these skills, the problem solving skills, walk, talk, rock, the peace path, can't say, can't play, all of those expectations that we have on the playground. And then did a post-test at the end and you can see the gains that they made. This was, I think I did for third, fourth, and fifth grade students. So basically, each section of the Spark document has similar kind of results for either personal, social, career, or academic domains, because that's what school counseling programming works on. And then the last part was identifying gaps in programming. And we established some goals to work on for the next year that would really rely on the PBIS programming. And that's a school-wide thing. I mean, I couldn't do what I do with my school counseling program if it weren't for the professionals that I work with. So without Amy's leadership, it wouldn't happen. And we have a lot of really talented professionals at EP Rock. All staff at all levels are involved in it, and so I guess it's a team effort.
Fantastic. Congratulations and thanks for your good work. Any comments or questions from the board for Kelly or Amy? Congratulations, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on then to the item number three, Superintendent's Report, January 10th, 2014 Official Student Enrollment is the first item.
So, Board members, what you see in front of you is our official enrollment count for the second Friday in January, January 10th, 2014. And as you see, the rows that go across for each of our schools and then totals, those numbers are in the white and they are compared to the third Friday in September count, which was on September 20th. So you can see there are some changes as a result of that, that we would expect as students go, come into our schools and some students also go out of our schools. If you look at the bottom-line totals using this form, in September, we had 5,639 students and we're just two students short of that in January for that official count. One of the things that kind of sticks out on this format and data is the homeschool numbers. And it seems to show a picture that those numbers are increasing. It really isn't accurate. So if you look at the total for homeschool down at the bottom, and in September, 39 students were listed. And then in January, in January 10th, 143. The thing that isn't listed here that's important to note is that parents don't have to register until October 15th for homeschool. And so as a result, we don't get an actual number until our January count. So just as comparison, 143 this year and last year, it was 131, so 12 students more, not a real significant increase. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk about that.
Any questions from the board, comment? Okay, move on.
All right, I'll go into kindergarten registration. Certainly, this is a number that is important to us as we move forward. And we expected that our preliminary registration, and I want to really emphasize that word, in February 2014, we expected it to be lower than other years because this represents children who were born in 2008 and 2009 during the recession. And so, we would see that was reflected slightly in last year's preliminary registration and our third Friday count in September of this year, down from previous years. And so we would expect that this number would be significantly down. But what we need to compare it to is not the actual count. So if you go to the last column in yellow, so preliminary registration, February 2014, and you'd see our total is 287 students. And it's really important for us to look back to the previous yellow column. So same time last year, 301 students, so down 14 students from that. And again, we expected this number to be down because birth rates that these students represent were down during this time period. We know that, now if we just switch to looking at the white column. So if you would look at February 2013, again, last year, 301 students. And then we look at the official count in September of 2013, 352. And the same thing happened the previous year. We know that that number is going to grow. In fact, if we take the last column, we had calls today with new kindergarteners who have not registered and not reflected in these numbers. So we are sure that the 287 is going to change before we open school in September. And it's just an indicator right now. Again, trying to think about this number and what it represents and what we would see in the future certainly is important in the district. So if we look at the trend in birth rates, and I'll just start with St. Croix County. Certainly, they represent more than the Hudson School District, but it does give us an indicator. In 2007, there were 1,000 students who were born. And just skipping to 2009, so during the recession and both in 2008 and 2009, it's the same pattern, there were 982, so it's starting, it's drops. But now when we go to 2013, we have 1,032 students who were born during that year. So it's a pattern that's up, down, and then up again. If we go to Hudson Hospital and just give you a little bit of information from there without going through too many numbers, in 2010, their births, 532. And then they have continued to say record years. And this last record year, 2013, they had 674 births. So again, pattern of increasing births. We would expect over time that our kindergarten numbers would be more representative, or are representative of that right now and would continue to represent that and would increase over time. I'd be happy to answer any questions again.
Any questions for Superintendent or comment? Okay, moving on.
All right, this last, Youth in Government, is a program I believe we've been involved in for a couple of years. And it is sponsored by the Minnesota YMCA Youth in Government Program. It is a youth-led learning opportunity that involves 2,500 middle school and high school students in Minnesota and Western Wisconsin each year. This is a nationwide program and it's active in nearly 40 states. So our students who participate and other students join other youth leaders to debate issues that are important to them. They research and publish issues, become aware of local, state, national, and international concerns. And we've had some feedback from the YMCA with the participation of our students this year. And they shared with us, that we thought was important for you to hear, that the Hudson delegation is a group of students to watch for in the future. And in their second year working together, our delegation made fabulous strides, according to the YMCA, towards strong leadership in future years. And so I'll just mention, there's a number of highlights, but I'm just going to give you one example of that. So Sam Cast, who is a sophomore at Hudson High School, had his bill signed by the Lieutenant Governor on Sunday. So he had a bill that went through the legislature, passed. And his bill, which when we think of HSD 2025, incentivized business and homes to use solar energy and sell back excess by creating a level system to earn tax credit. And additionally, if the excess is sold, this is the part I like the best, to nonprofits or schools to assist utility costs, there would be guaranteed tax credit rewarded. So certainly, really good thinking about the issues that we face and how to resolve those. Great experience for our students and they represented the district very, very well. And that would be my report.
Any comments or questions of the Superintendent? Okay, thank you. Moving on then, we'll move then to number four, Reports. Sandy has a report on High School Learning for the Future STEM and Healthcare Academies update.
Thank you. Tonight, we have some very exciting updates to share with you regarding the progress of our two high school academies, which are set to begin next fall. The high school staff have been working extremely hard to put the many pieces in place to create a quality educational opportunity for our students. I'll turn the mic over to Principal Peg Schumaker and take it from there.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to report to you an update on the academies. I talked with you, I think, a couple of months ago about how we were proceeding ahead. And this sort of story has been about four to five years in the making. And we're at really a new beginning, if you will, because we have 100 and about 127 students registered for our academies. It breaks down, we are closed in STEM and have, we were thrilled with the results. We specifically recruited girls in particular. There's, as you know, a lot of women are being targeted, if you will, to join the engineering ranks. Right now, a lot of our courses, especially in Project Lead the Way, are male-heavy. And so of the 75 students, we have a third of those are girls. So we are really tickled about promoting females in the area of STEM. The remaining students then are in the Healthcare Academy. Tonight, I have a couple of students who I twisted arms to come, as well as a parent. We have not rehearsed this, but I wanted you to have some authentic opportunity to hear from some of the students and parent that are going to be involved in our academies. So I'm first going to turn it over to Kim Bruner. And then we have Jason Bruner and then Jackson Helmers. Both of our students are ninth graders, both have applied for the academy and have been accepted into our new academy where we're doing high school very differently. So I'm going to first turn it over to Ms. Bruner, who will talk about why she might have been interested as a parent in helping her son perhaps decide or thinking about the advantages for Jason. And then I'll have our students speak.
Hi. Sorry, I didn't prepare Jason to speak, so I'll give him the option there. I didn't realize it was going to be this formal.
Kim, that mic is really, you have to really get closer.
Oh, great, that'll help, that'll help with the nervousness.
Not so much the weakness here, but for the audience to hear too.
So yeah, Peg asked me to come speak, so I did just want to come and share my enthusiasm and my support as a parent for this career advisory. I think it's an opportunity for our students to get additional learning experiences that are non-traditional, get them out of the schools, you know, get them those experiences that are going to help them to succeed in real life once they get out of high school. Jason was actually very excited and brought this to me. And I'm pretty sure we came home and registered the very first minute that they opened up because he was worried that it was going to close down. So I think just from the presentation that was put on at the high school, to be able to do some job shadowing and again, to get some of these meetings kind of outside of the schools, I think is a great experience for our students. I think we have a great student body and we do great academically. And I really just feel like this is really going to build on that and help our students to be even more prepared to succeed post-high school. The other thing I like about it is just kind of bringing it down, an ever-growing high school, kind of down to a smaller group of students with common interests and to help them to, you know, hopefully bond with each other and kind of get that common enthusiasm and keep them engaged in high school. As they get older and with all the other distractions, as a parent, I just, I find that very motivating and I'm very excited to see that happening. I think along with that, what they did with the freshman advisories this year, I mean, as a parent, I was very concerned, I'll be honest, with Jason coming into the high school, kind of with the situation there. I actually contemplated open enrollment. And those of you that know me know I'm a huge school supporter, so that was very difficult for me. But that's how concerned I am about this situation at the high school. And I was so proud and happy to see kind of what they were really working with within the constraints that we have right now, to take those students and to really care about them and to bring them down into a smaller group by, you know, keeping that small group together with the English and the science and the world studies. And I just see the career advisory is really kind of building on that momentum and helping to keep these students engaged and to help me as a parent to feel that my child is getting the education that he deserves and kind of get the attention that he deserves. I still want a new high school, so I'll just go on record of saying that. And I will pass it along to, I don't know if Jason wants to say anything or not.
Jason, you look excited about being here.
I'd say what? Oh, hello. My name's Jackson Helmers and I'm a ninth grade student at Hudson High School. When I first heard the high school was going to offer a STEM Plus Academy, I was pleasantly surprised. For a few years now, I've known that I would love to have a profession as an engineer, but I've always had questions such like, how can I assure that this dream comes reality? And what courses does the high school have that will teach me the necessary criteria? This is why when the academy became available, I too, just like Jason, signed up right away. It seemed that like a way to simplify and connect the teachings of the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics just seemed really perfect and I just really liked that idea. For me, the most intriguing part about the academy is how information is taught through hands-on projects and project-based learning. Like I and many other people find that project-based learning is one of the quickest and easiest ways to learn. I also find that I remember facts significantly better through hands-on projects. Another plus side, I think, to the STEM Plus Academy would be that upon completion of it, you get like a certification of doing so, which colleges can see. This may give you like an advantage when trying to sign up for a specific college that you may want. So I am thankful for this wonderful opportunity and can't wait to be the first class to have a chance to participate in the new idea of academies.
Fantastic, that's wonderful. It's great to hear the perspective of students and parents. And it's really very helpful for us to kind of hear how this plays out or transitions into the home. And so, I mean, we've been hearing about this and knowing about this for quite a while now and have been excited about it, but it's particularly interesting to hear the perspective from the home. So thank you for bringing that to us tonight and thanks for your sharing this. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Lynn.
I have a question from either a parent or a student perspective. Is there anything that you think this was a rollout year? So obviously, it's a learning year for us. Is there anything that we should be thinking about as far as implementation or changes or things that you saw that you go, oh, aha, that might have made it better? Or, you know, we know we're kind of working through some things. Is there anything that comes to mind that you want to share with us that?
Well, we haven't gone through it yet, so I may have more to say next year. If you had asked me the same question, I'll be honest. I thought the school did a really good job of putting on the presentation. I liked the bringing in some of the speakers that came in kind of from, there was the engineer from 3M, which Jason is also interested in the engineering, more chemical, we think. But it was nice to hear those perspectives, you know, from the, there was a student, someone from the healthcare, and then the gentleman from 3M. So, I mean, just to have, to know that there's already that support from the external, from others outside of the school, again, to kind of get that learning experience. I mean, great teachers and all that, this just supplements that. And to know that they have already built some support, you know, with some of these subject matter experts and, you know, others from outside that are supporting this project, made me feel very comfortable and excited about it. So, you know, I know we'll be kind of figuring out as we go, but more specifics just as far as how the job shadowing works or what kinds of opportunities will be available outside of the school hours, will just be good to know. And I know it's a first year and we're all kind of, you know, working our way through it. So for me, the more information, the better, just on how are these things going to work?
Thank you.
I would also like to build on the fact that Ms. Schumaker said try and get more like females to be involved in it because I'm in two Project Lead the Way classes and there are only four girls total from them.
That's no good, is it?
Yeah.
You know, and I think Lynn brings an important point to this, and that is, this is the maiden run for us. So we're going to, I mean, as much research has been done and studying so forth, we're going to learn from it as well. So I know that Peg and her staff will have their antennas up and that we'll be researching and looking and reevaluating as we move along to even make it better in the future, so.
I have a question for Peg. Were some students want to get into the program and didn't have space?
We've had students wanting to get into the program after, the STEM Academy, after we sort of closed. I mean, we committed to 75. We'll see, we'll see how it turns out in terms of staffing. So we have started, we've only got a few that are on the waiting list that kind of delayed their application. So we may be able to accommodate those students after. We're just wanting to make sure that we have capacity to fulfill what we really want to do with the mentorships and job shadows and work-based learning that's involved.
And what was the kind of, and what was like the criteria for STEM? Was there?
You know, we really, being the first year, we looked at passion for, we looked at passion for just the areas of science, technology, engineering, math. Some of the, we talked about perhaps what careers that they were headed for. There were, it was inspiring to see the comments from students in terms of how they want to direct their path. And really, I'm always going to save that document that I have of all of the students' responses to it because it really confirmed that there are students that are ready to sort of make some choices and have some experiences that help narrow down what it is that they want to do. And so the, some of those comments varied. But it was, we were looking really for passion and we, you know, just commitment and that sort of thing. We do have both, we've got some students that are more interested in the two-year technical track, which is really important, you know, as well to have, and as well as those that are looking at a four-year-plus track. So we do have a range of students and experiences.
And just want to follow on quickly. Do you have any kind of feel for how many of those students said, hey, I want to go into, you know, software engineering or software development versus like chemical engineering or mechanical engineering or?
I could find that out, but I wouldn't, I think I'd be better ready to answer that after they have done their U-Link investigation. I think I'd be better able, and I think students would be better able to answer that. So I would be happy to report that.
My guess is going to be low in computer engineering and software development because I think a lot of students think about engineering in terms of mechanical or chemical. And I work in a software company, we're, you know, we have about 100 engineers. We can't find enough engineers right now, right?
You'll take resumes.
So, and all those jobs come back to the US.
Yes.
So, but just, I'd be curious, not necessarily in the board, I would be curious to see, you know, how many other students were interested in software development versus kind of traditional engineering.
I'd be happy to report that after, yep, that sort of U-Link investigation.
Anybody else?
Mr. President? You know, we have to, we look at these results and certainly, we need to thank Principal Schumaker, her administrative team, our teacher leaders, for moving HSD 2025 forward into action at the high school. This is a massive body of work. We're just starting that movement, but even to get to this point. I remember saying to Peg, even though she came to the board and said there were 75 spaces in each of the academies, I said, if we start with 25, that's a huge success, knowing what other districts have done. So we are beyond that. It's kudos to those leaders who have worked on this to move it forward, to prepare our students and to really give them the opportunity. And when you think about this, you know, she just talked about numbers, but that's 25% of the freshman class who have chosen to go into this very new endeavor because they see that it's going to offer some things to them that they haven't had in the traditional program. So again, as we move HSD 2025 forward, high school learning for the future forward, we're on the right path and our students are confirming that for us.
Yeah, I would echo Mary's comments regarding Peg. Kudos to you for stepping into a situation, I think, you know, when we had a turnover in leadership and boy, just without, didn't miss a step. So that's certainly credit to you and your staff, and so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, the next report will be from Lynn and then Mary. Secondary grade 6 to 12 space for learning, community engagement feedback. And we're going to have Tracy join us as well here, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just by way of review, Board members, as you recall, the Board of Education wanted to provide multiple ways for the community to engage and have their feedback regarding the secondary space options that we've, that we're down to. First, first of all, there was an online questionnaire that was available from January 2nd through January 26th on the district website. The details of the 799 questionnaire responses to the survey were provided to the Board of Education prior to the three-hour work session that we had on January 28th. And they're also available online as we speak, right on the main page, it's the second item down. In addition to that, secondly, the Board held Community Conversation Public Meetings on both January 9th and the 21st, and also held parent group meetings at all five of the elementary schools. And Tracy's going to take us through, is it Tracy first? Yeah, you'll take us through a synopsis of those findings.
Just to reiterate on the online questionnaire, the, that was made available, obviously, on the website, but also sent out to our families through Thursday folders. We sent it out to some of our stakeholder groups, the Hudson Moms Group, which is our preschool parent group, St. Pat's and Trinity. We also sent it out through their email service and some other community groups that use our facilities. our facilities. And, you know, trying to push it out to as many people and obviously also letting people know that it was available through the Hudson Star Observer. So, what I'm going to do tonight is walk you through the themes that came out in both the community engagement process and through the questionnaire. And the items that are listed here as themes are items that came up repeatedly, so not just once or twice. And so, I'll quickly walk through those and add a little bit to what's actually there. The questionnaire itself didn't ask about how the district was doing in its job as educating students, but we did get a lot of response from folks, very supportive responses as to the quality of the education that we're providing here at Hudson, at both the high school and the middle school. And so, for the most part, or we heard repeatedly that the community believes students are receiving a high-quality education. Along with that came many comments that if we had modern facilities and adequate space, science labs and whatnot, that we could probably do better in educating our students. Strongest support in maintaining, or there was very strong support in maintaining the middle school house concept. We heard that repeatedly in the community meetings, but also 33 comments in the survey related to the house concept. Now, I might not have caught every single comment that was mentioned regarding the house or house concept, but clearly support for that and the support that it provides our students at that grade level or those grade levels. Strongest support for a newly constructed high school, whether that was a three-year high school or a four-year high school. And I say four-year high school, because the most common alternative option that was presented by both people in the community meetings as well as in the survey was a four-year high school. Now, we left it open, if people had other options to bring forward, they were able to do that through the survey and in the community meetings. There were other options that people brought up, convert Hudson Prairie into middle school space, convert the high school into an elementary and a district office, add-on to the high school and the middle school. And just as comparison, comments that related to a four-year high school, I counted 43 as compared to seven comments about adding on to the high school or the middle school. And I only counted, as far as those add-ons, it wasn't to construct another building like option three was add-on to the high school and construct a 6'9". It was seven folks who said, we can use the sites that we currently have and add-on to those. So, just as comparison, 43 people asking for a four-year high school as compared to seven who say we could just add-on. Strongest support for a new construction site that would accommodate future student growth and allow expansion if needed. The majority of the respondents or participants believed Hudson will continue to grow and experience, especially given the new Stillwater Bridge, so that plan for the future, plan out 10, 20-plus years. A new high school should include an auditorium. A new high school should include or be planned for accommodating varsity athletics, either at the time of a new construction or at some point in the future, but to be planning for that. With regard to the 6'9" grade configuration that was part of option two and part of option three, there was not a whole lot of support for that option. There was concern about splitting our student population into two different schools with a, potentially a school of haves and have-nots. And also, more concern about the maturity level between a sixth grader and a ninth grader, putting them both in the same space. So, at the bottom, it gets lost a little bit there at that last bullet point, but there was certainly a strong sense of urgency and multiple times where it said, get a new school built now, that there's been lots of opportunity to give input and move things forward. Additionally, existing overcrowding is driving people to reluctantly look at alternative school options, or whether that's looking outside the district or like open enrollment or looking to the Twin Cities for a private school or within our own community for a private school. Many people said this is where they would prefer to be. They'd prefer to be in Hudson Public School, but if this is not resolved, that they would be looking elsewhere. I already mentioned the 10- to 20-year solution. They also asked that we have a full plan in place, or the board has a full plan in place, including the specific type of school being constructed, site where it will be constructed, and plans for expansion and impact to the taxpayer before we bring forward a referendum. So, they want the full package and explained to them. If the UU site cannot be used, sell it. There were multiple responses about making a good faith effort to, or a gesture to sell that property before moving forward with a referendum. There were 22 responses in that category. Most frequently mentioned, new construction site, this was not asked, but this is what was given to us from the community with St. Croix Meadows. And then finally, using, or asking the board to use taxpayer dollars in a fiscally responsible way. And then what you have following this are the actual responses. So, you have some demographic information, so you see where age groupings of those who responded to the questionnaire, you see which municipality the respondents came from, whether or not they have children in the district. Majority of the respondents did have children in the district, and then which schools. And our highest number of respondents had students in the middle school. That's not surprising. This is the group most likely to experience their kids actually benefiting from new space. Whether or not the respondent was an employee, majority of the respondents were non-employees. And then a question about the relationship the respondent has to the district, whether that's a parent of a Hudson graduate, graduate, a homeschooler, taxpayer, you could choose multiple responses here. Not everybody who could choose taxpayer, for example, chose that, but you could have chosen multiple responses. And then, questions got into priority setting, do you see this as a high priority, medium priority, or low priority? And then, what we did was ask option one, option two, and option three. And when you look at that data, you can see that option one came out as receiving the highest number of responses, as far as that's what they, what the community supports the most. In comparison, when you look at option three, which is the construct, I should go back. Option one is construct a new 10-12 high school, convert the current high school to grade eight, nine, and convert the current middle school to 6'7". Option three was build a new 6'9", convert the current high school to a 10-12, an add-on, and convert the current middle school to a 6'9". And that would require also some smaller additions. That option had a higher response, when you look at that final graph there where the three are shown. So, people liked that option a lot, disliked it a lot more than they actually liked the option one, which is what they liked the most. Then we also asked about specific spaces and in looking to the future and what would be in a, or at a new construction site. So, new school construction site, asking about modernizing science classrooms and lab space, that was a high priority. Having a site that could accommodate varsity athletic fields received high votes. A swimming pool for a 6'9" or what we currently use in 6'8" programming was, received less. It was kind of a lukewarm response to that. What I did learn from people, though, many people still believe we have a pool at the high school. So, they, there are people who believe that, or remember a pool at the high school and assume that we still have a pool at the high school and the middle school. So, question why we wouldn't want a third pool. So, the high school pool's been gone for a while, but it's not something we talk about all that much, so that's understandable. If a new high school were built, what priority would you place on having an auditorium on that new site? People were overwhelming in their support for an auditorium at a new high school site. Ability to expand opportunities for indoor and outdoor activities and athletics, again, a high response in support of. Being able to have space for community meetings, that was lukewarm. However, in the community meetings, people often said, and also in the survey often said, that whatever is built has to be community space, so that the board needs to be looking at how do they provide space for community use. So, this comes out, you know, perhaps it wasn't a well-written question and people didn't understand it, but in face-to-face meetings, people said you need to have space for community use. And then, the final question here was about expansion for future growth, and again, that was a high priority. So, the highest additional considerations for a new construction site, auditorium, space for expansion, and athletic space and science. Adequate or modern science labs and whatnot.
Very good, very good report. And I know that the board has spent quite a bit of time going through this in a work session. I think Lynn reported over three hours or so of looking into it. So, our purpose tonight is to help the community also understand the results of this, this report. And just, I'll ask if there's any comments or questions from the board regarding the report? Dan?
Mr. President, just a question for Tracy regarding, of those respondents, did you feel like that represented a pretty good cross-section of the community? I mean, as I look at, you know, the individuals that responded or the groups, it seemed like, seems like a pretty good representation, or is there something missing there that?
If we look at past surveys that we've done with consulting groups, so the number of people who responded to this questionnaire, which in the document you have that you originally received, there were 799 respondents. There, if you recall, there were additional respondents that came in afterwards, which were included also. So, we were well over, or around 810, I think, as far as respondents. But back to previous consultants who worked with the district and did samples within the community, those samples were typically 400, so we were well above the samples that we've done. And when I looked back at those survey samples, we did, that was at least three different surveys that we did, and that 400 was fairly standard. So, you know, this is significantly higher than what we have seen in the past.
Lynn?
Mr. President, Tracy, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that came up when I was at the community conversations, and one of them was the discussion about community space. And from the people that I talked to, they were interested in having this space be community space and flexible space, but not that we create additional space. So, create the space to provide for the programming needs, but also be thinking about how it would be flexible for the use within our community.
Correct. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I, you know, just, my final comment is that, you know, these surveys are always tricky, because it's, you know, how you present the question to try to get clear, clear, understandable responses and so forth. I think that we've done a good job of this. I think that even if the questions were maybe, even if the questions happened to be a little confusing, I think it seems to be a pretty strong mandate from the community in regard to option one, and that's what my takeaway was in it. So, I feel good about the process that we went through, and I think that we've heard from the community, so.
And just one additional, since the board had the work session on this, you received an email today from one additional citizen, and that's the only other feedback that we've received since that time, since this has been made public.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Will that be forwarded to us, or should we look online to see that email?
I forwarded that to you.
Thank you.
Today.
Thank you, Tracy, Lynn, and?
Tom?
Yes.
I just have one question. I wasn't at the work session, and you just commented that you studied this for three hours at the work session, you said? That's what you said? That you went thoroughly?
That's how long the work session took, yes.
Okay. I know this was handed out at the work session, but Mary told me, Mary went through this stuff with me, then was kind enough to meet with me after that and go through some things with me. But she said that this report was just handed out to the board at the work session, that it wasn't really discussed. Is that correct?
I think we were talking about one specific item on the agenda, and I said at that point it wasn't discussed. So, the first item on the agenda, or one of the first items, was Tracy going through the comments that she just did, that summary. Then the board went into closed session and came back out, and then the discussion occurred. So, it was more about a time on the agenda that that discussion, they didn't talk about it when Tracy basically gave this report.
I know you weren't able to be there, and I was only there remotely, but we had gone through the entire report, I mean, say, line by line, basically how it was done tonight, even through the verbatim comments. And so, I think, I think there was a lot of time taken with it.
And then I misunderstood what she told me, the one she met with me, because I asked her, because I had concern that this report was not given to these board members till 24 hours prior to the meeting, and it's a 206-page report.
Right.
And I thought, that's a lot of information to consume in one day or 24-hour day. So, when Mary met with me, I asked her if it was discussed thoroughly, and she said that she, it was simply handed out and not discussed. That's what she told me. So, I thought this was just handed out and not discussed.
Okay.
Now, I find out that it actually was discussed. She went through this same thing on the 28th?
In great detail.
Correct. And then there was discussion after that?
Later on, after the work session.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing with Sandy, though. We didn't read individually the 799 responses. We read that synopsis by?
I included some of the comments from the survey.
But we didn't read the 200 pages. Okay, yeah, that's why I think you're confused. So, in the board meeting, we had this exact same synopsis that we went over tonight, but we were hand, we were previously given all of the 799 comments to read prior to that meeting. So, at the meeting, it was the synopsis that Tracy just went over now, and then prior in preparation for that meeting, we individually would have read the 799 comments.
Did everybody get them read in 24 hours?
I did.
Jamie did.
I did.
Jamie Johnson did.
Did you? No? All right, I just need a clarification, because I thought that this was not thoroughly discussed at the, at the September, January 28th meeting, at the work session, based upon what she told me. Okay? Thank you.
It was a quick turnaround, and it was, it required a little extra effort on our part, as far as the board is concerned. And I read through most of it. I didn't get through all of it, but I certainly read through enough of it to understand what the theme was and agreed with the summary themes that were identified. So, I'm satisfied that the report was, and the summary of the report was, well-represented what the statements, verbatim statements indicated, for the most part.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
So, you know, when we started this survey, we wanted to give our community as much time as possible to respond. We also had no idea how many people would respond, and so, as a result, when We also had no idea how many people would respond, and so as a result, when we started to see the numbers coming in and know that, knew when the work session of the board was, I did send out a couple of reminders to the board that there would be a quick turnaround, and that it was pretty extensive as far as what they would need to read. So I'm trying to help out, but again, just a reminder to everybody, at the work session, there is no action by the board. That's action that's being taken tonight.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on, then. We have one citizen's request to speak. Pat, if you'd like to come forward, and again, would you just go to the mic and give your name and address and...
Pat Sabin, 773 Garrity Lane, Hudson, Wisconsin. Because I hope to have some other issues to address to the board, this will be the last time I speak to you on Common Core. But don't breathe a sigh of relief too quickly. I intend to forward you information through the superintendent, which I hope you will find worthy of your time. I spend hours every week reading and copying articles on Common Core. As one writer said today, taking in the Common Core news is like drinking from a fire hose. As much as I would like to see you do the same, I am realistic. So I am giving each one of you a book entitled How to Stop Common Core. Last month, you brought up to me many good points, which indicated that you are most likely hearing only information that Common Core wants you to hear. You have been armed with the propaganda and talking points to refute our arguments, but our guns are loaded with facts, yours are loaded with wishful thinking. Hopefully, in the last few months, you have begun asking yourselves such questions as why are thousands of people across the country trying to get this stopped? Who are these people? What is motivating them to speak out for children, parents, teachers, and schools? What do they see that I don't? This book will address your comments on standards and competition in a global economy. You will learn about the legality, the cost, the influence of the United Nations and stakeholders, and how it will affect private and home schools. You will understand who the true beneficiaries are. You will get some idea why conservative, traditional families are some of the biggest opponents. But believe me when I tell you, the opposition includes all ages, races, incomes, and political persuasions. We are parents, grandparents, and concerned taxpayers. Putting all the facts aside, we know deep down this is just plain wrong for the children, the teachers, and the schools. This book will add to your understanding of the above issues, but much has happened since this book was published. The only way you will get a complete picture is from reading articles appearing daily on the internet. I will try to keep you updated from time to time on the most important ones. The toughest stories that I find to read are about teachers leaving the profession because of Common Core, and how it is mentally and emotionally affecting the children. Please read this book with an open mind. Governor Walker said that Wisconsin can do better. So I ask you, why should we be chained to mediocre standards which may or may not be best for Hudson? Part of the answer involves the funds which were used to bribe the states to accept Common Core, even though it was an untested, unwritten educational experiment with our children as guinea pigs. Another part of the answer is socialism, that the government is the answer no matter what the question. I have only recently been attending the school board meetings. I have heard what the Hudson School District is achieving without Common Core. I see accomplishments of students and teachers. I hear discussions on various issues from board members, teachers, and other staff. I believe that if you really knew what was at the core of Common Core, you would agree that we should rid the district of what has already been started and put a halt towards further implementation. I feel we have sold our souls and those of our children by accepting Common Core. I know we have talented, educated, and caring people in this area to create curriculum and tests which will far exceed our expectations. There are many successful schools across the globe that we can learn from. We should be looking at private schools, faith-based schools, home schools, and classical schools for ideas. We also need to learn from the failing schools. Perhaps the district needs some tweaking, but not the complete overhaul known as Common Core state standards. Sometimes tweaking does not involve moving forward with new ideas and more money. Sometimes it means looking way back into our history and see what used to work. Education used to work. Let's get back to the basics, and let's really put the children first. Thank you. The books are over here on the table, and Tom, maybe I can impose on you to make sure everybody gets a copy, their names on them. Mary, I have a copy for you, and Sandy, I have a copy for you, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I appreciate your comments. I think an open mind is always important, either way, in both ways, and I will certainly accept the gift of the book and read it, and we'll all keep open minds. I would just comment that we, like you've said, want to keep and protect what we are accomplishing and hope to accomplish into the future. That's our first priority. So we're very, I would say, we've been involved with this, we've been involved with the Common Core study over the past couple of years now, multiple years, in terms of looking at this as it's being rolled out, and I'm comforted by the fact that we have the ability to create the roadmap and the curriculums and those types of things that are needed in order to reach these, what are been termed Common Core standards, and they are common. So I appreciate your concern about our students, about this district. We share that same concern, and we will, I'll pledge to be sure to keep an open mind. I know that there's been a number of board members that have attended some of the Common Core sessions and visits, presentations around that issue, so it's not that we are putting our head in the sand and we're keeping an open mind. So thank you. Sandy?
Ms. Sabin mentioned the thing she's found online about, how it distresses her about teachers who are getting out of the teaching profession because of what they're now expected to do and because of the demands of this curriculum. What distresses me, and I have been online looking things up, too, accumulating information, trying to educate myself on this subject, I've seen some of the stuff about teachers, but even more distressing to me is the parents and the students who are reporting great frustration, especially the students in the younger grades, probably sixth grade and under. They don't understand the math, it's not taught the way it used to be, or the way a logical thinker, a child of a certain age, would expect it to be taught, or the way history says things should be taught for the mindset of a five- to eight-year-old. Frustrations, kids come home crying all the time. I've had some parents in the Hudson School District mention to me that their children are frustrated because they feel like they're dumb because they can't catch on to things because it's being taught in a new way, and that is one of the issues that I'm finding with what's going on with Common Core. Kids are frustrated, then they turn out to be behavior problems, there's chaos in the classrooms. Those are some of the things that I'm finding when I'm looking up things. So I'm just bringing you up to date on things that I have found. I will put together some stuff, and I have Mary email it around to all of you, so that you can maybe educate yourself even more than what this book is, and I don't know what the book is.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Just one comment. I think we in the board have to be really careful with a lot of parahetical comments around "I've heard" or "there's one person." We're running a school district here, and Mary, I'd ask you on, you know, if we're going to talk about this, I think we need to talk about it holistically versus, you know, "I heard," or "I think," or "there's three children" versus, you know, 5,600. So any comments on that?
Well, you know, on the opposite side of this, we have teacher leaders and teachers throughout our system who've been implementing Common Core for a number of years and are very excited about what it offers for our students and the rigor that it presents, and we're continuing to bring that to a higher level in our classrooms, and Sandy could address that a little more. I don't believe we've lost any teachers because of Common Core. That has not been any kind of comment that I believe, and I see Andrew saying no over there, that we've heard. Certainly, there can be confusion between a higher level of accountability that is being required in schools and higher outcomes. That's changing, we know that's changing. We're seeing reform at, we're seeing things change at the high school. And so I think things are getting mixed up with what is Common Core, which are standards, learning standards, and also other things that are coming down, whether it's testing, standardized testing. There are many things that are happening in education. So to, I can't really speak beyond Hudson, but we're seeing, we're not seeing evidence of that at this point.
Just one more comment, Mr. President, is I just, you know, my comment is, you know, we've been asked to raise, kind of raise the bar, and if you look at, you know, countries that we're compared against often, I've spent significant time in those countries, and the bar is raised, and they do have a level of, you know, testing, and that's not where we want, you know, standardized testing is one part of this, just to set a consistent standard, but, you know, we're reacting to, we're raising the bar. And I do think there's sometimes, I think sometimes there is some confusion between raising the bar and Common Core, and so I just want to make sure as a board that we talk with facts and data and holistically versus, you know, comments that we've read on the internet, so.
Agreed. Well said. Others? Okay, thank you very much for that good discussion. We'll move then on to the topics for action. We're going to follow a format here where we'll have a presentation of the item for action, and then if there's any comment from the audience that they would like to make, we'll, I'm sorry, from the Beasley family in 7A, and then general to the audience in B. And then we've got a written comment on 7A, and then we'll have board deliberation, just so we follow that kind of format. So the first topic for action, Dan and then Tim are going to talk about it, is a Beasley petition to detach property from the Hudson School District and attach to the Somerset School District. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, these issues are never, you know, terribly easy issues for either a committee or a board to deal with, because, you know, there's a lot of factors and considerations to take into account making these decisions. I know at the Finance Committee level, when we took this issue up, yes, we looked at the criteria that's in statute for dealing with these types of issues, but then there's, you know, the, sort of the reality of looking at where the parcel is, where is it in relationship to the various boundaries, school district boundaries involved, you know, what's in the best interest of the school district, what's in the best interest of the child, you know, the educational needs, the transportation system involved, you know, there's just, there's not a single issue that these types of things turn on. So I personally find it, you know, very challenging to deal with these issues. That said, when we, as a committee, addressed this issue, you know, we had some good discussion, albeit we couldn't come to a complete, you know, decision or recommendation. Thus, we decided to take it to the board and have the board deliberate on this issue as a whole. So at that point, I guess I'll turn it over to Tim and see if he wants to review the facts.
Okay, sure. So just to talk a little bit about the detachment attachment process, it's a process where the property of one district is attached and transferred to another district. In this case, it would be a detachment from the Hudson School District and an attached property for the Somerset School District. So therefore, anyone residing at that property becomes a resident, would eventually become a resident of the Somerset School District if this were approved. There are a number of different criteria that the board's to take into consideration, and those criteria are the six factors that are listed under your board materials. In addition to considering those factors, you can also consider other appropriate factors. So you have some latitude in making your decision, because you need to follow the criteria under Section 117 dot 1.5, but you also have some latitude in drawing other information into the decision. The petitioners in this case, Anthony and Amy Beasley, 457 147th Avenue in Somerset, Somerset mail-in address, petition to detach their property. The property has a value on the tax statements of about $165,000. The map of the property, if we can go to that, so you can get an idea. One of the things that you would look at is whether the reorganization will make any part of a school district's territory non-contiguous. And you can see there, we've got that the green section is Somerset, and then the gold section is the Hudson School District. So you can see all the lots in that general vicinity are all Hudson. And then what happens with this petition is that one, the corner of Lot 18, would then become part of Somerset. So you'd have the one lot in that general area being Somerset, and then the rest of it being Hudson. One factor that you can consider when making the decision is the potential future effect of detaching this property and attaching to Somerset. Currently, there's not a lot of development up in that area right now, and so what happens is if you approve the detachment in this case, it could cause other detachments to take place in the future, and your decision tonight maybe, may influence any types of appeals that could occur on other decisions in this area in the future. So you have, you need to look at consistency, that's important. The other thing is looking at state data. So we have data statewide for 1011 and 1112, and so when we're looking at that data, in addition to the other criteria, in 2010-11, there were 20 petitions to detach or attach property, and in all but one, those were all denied by the school districts. What happened is that, again, there's an appeal process that the petitioner can go through, and they'd appeal to the state level, and there's a board that would hear that petition. So of the 27 were appealed, and the ruling, the governing board that makes the decision reversed two of the district decisions. So 20 petitions, one approved at the district level, seven went on to appeal, and then two were reversed. If you look at 1112, and that's the last date the state has data available, there were 21 petitions, and three were approved by school, at the school district level, and then six went on to appeal, and three were reversed. Many times, in considering the criteria, boards are considering the impact of that detachment and what that does. In this case, there is aid, state aid that would be lost. These students have attended the Somerset School District in the past, they moved to a new location, and now would attend, ordinarily attend Hudson, but they're... now would attend, ordinarily attend Hudson, but they're right now attending under tuition waiver process, which is essentially a process that allows a transition during a move to another district. So there's a potential aid loss that would come with this. And then not only that, but you'd lose an asset, which is your, the property valuation, albeit not a, a major factor here. But again, looking at the future, what the future could hold for the start of a, of a detachment up in that area, that's, again, a point that should be considered. So again, the petitioners and any other affected residents have the opportunity to come up and testify. So I don't know if you've got any additional questions on this I can answer.
I think we have.
Yeah. Could I have a, could I just do a follow-up, Mr. President?
Sure.
To Tim. If, if someone, are, are records within the school district are, are such that if someone has a question about whether or not a specific part of the school district is in or outside the district, do we maintain those records? Or is there multiple places where someone can?
Well, if, if someone were, wanted to find out if they're moving, et cetera, that they want to find out if the, where they're moving to is in the district, we can certainly answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Beasley?
Yep.
Okay. Invite you to come and speak to us.
Can I just go up, or do I need?
I'm sorry?
Do I need to announce myself here first?
If you could, yeah.
Okay.
Just for protocol. You want to pull that up a little closer to, so you can stand up straight?
Okay. Amy Beasley, and address is obviously 457 147th Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay.
Pull it really close. It might not be on. It needs to be up. There you go.
Okay. There. I guess some of the things that I wanted to point out with our petition to redistrict is, you cannot get to our lot without going entirely through Somerset School District. So this picture doesn't really show it. If it, if the, you know, top boundary was farther north, you would see that the Somerset School District line is literally at the end of our road. So Hudson bus can't get in without going completely through Somerset. All the other lots in the neighborhood, except for our road, are Somerset School Districts. We actually moved from Highland Hills, which is kind of another funny development, because like this one, it's all Somerset, except there's one house in there, and maybe now two house, or two lots in that development that petitioned Somerset and were, you know, redistrict to Hudson. So it's kind of the same thing. But anyways, here we moved four miles closer to Somerset Schools, didn't even look at the school district because, you know, we were moving from Highland Hills, which was a Somerset School District development, going four miles closer to the district, didn't look at it, and built our house, moved in in September. Our son was diagnosed with cancer. We were in the hospital while we moved. After we got out of the hospital, I called the school and said, you know, hey, we've moved, here's our new address, and then we find out that it's in Hudson School District. And yes, we, we could have pulled up maps and, and found out. We just didn't even think about it, because, like I said, we were going closer to the school by about four miles. So, and, you know, there again, because all of the area is Somerset, just this little road is Hudson. So unfortunately, and I know it's not your guys' issue, it's ours, but now we haven't had busing, you know, because although they've been able to continue in the school with tuition waivers, their bus stop is now a mile and a half outside in the Somerset School District. And it's just, it's been rough, given our other things. So anyhow, our kids are ages 10 to 17, and basically in fifth through 11th grades, we have five kids. So we've got quite a few kids that this affects. And we are the only house in the entire development. There are no other lots sold with plans of how, houses to go up anytime soon. It's been sitting empty for a number of years. And of course, you know, with the bridge, that may or may not change. But anyways, our kids will continue to go to Somerset Schools, because they're just too old for us to switch to Hudson at this point. And assuming that we would get open enrollment, we could continue to do that, but then we have the busing issue. So that's really our biggest reason for petitioning, you know, for redistrict is not because we have any issues with the Hudson School District, but our kids have grown up in Somerset and we don't have busing for them. So.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mrs. Beasley. We'll, we'll deliberate here and talk a little bit about this. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So, comments from the board or?
I just, Mr. President, I just have one clarification. Tim, maybe Tim can clarify this. On that road over there, we're a lot, through Lot 41, those lots are half in Hudson and half in Somerset. Are all of those houses on that side of this subdivision in the Somerset School District? Or does it matter where your house sits?
Yes.
Are those developed lots?
That, you're, you're right. Those are, you know, those lots are approximately, a quarter of the lot is in Somerset, and then the other three quarters is in, in Hudson. I don't know. I think when we looked, it looked like Lot 18 was one of the only ones that had a house on it. But I, I don't know if I could answer that question exactly, but I'm, I don't know if I can say, if the house, the house probably needs to be in one school district or the other.
So those lots, there are no lots on, are no homes on those lots right now, so we really don't know?
I don't believe there are.
Okay. So that, does that mean that if somebody buys it and builds backwards, back to the backside of the lot, they'll be in Hudson? If they build to the front of the lot, they'll be in Somerset?
That's very possible. I, you know, and we, we pull these maps. This is a certified survey map. This is county information is where we pulled it from. But yeah, it is, it is kind of funny. I would imagine, though, when they're, when you look at the, the boundary lines and how they run, yeah, there's a setback off of the roadway.
Yes, there is.
But, yeah, then you'd have, yeah, but if that lot, if the house is located, my guess is it's probably, if it's located in the Hudson School District, then it's Hudson.
All right.
What if part of it's in Somerset and part in Hudson? I'm not really exactly sure how that gets determined.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Other comments or questions, or who wants to make a case for what?
I'll just comment on Sandy's question. I have personal knowledge of a home where 70% of the neighbors live in Hudson attendance area, and where one of the persons who was on, on the border of the two, where they built their home and actually put their master bedroom to find which district they were put into. So, I mean, out where she's talking about, there's lots of these neighborhoods because it's circuitous. I mean, it's not like there's clean-cut guidelines of where lot maps are. I mean, we're, we're going to see this situation more and more as that area develops. And, you know, I guess one of the things that I brought up, and one of the reasons that, you know, you know, Bruce brought up a great point. We need to try to figure out how we're going to have consistency on how we attach and detach, you know? Where are we at as a board? And I guess one of the things that I look at is, she has the option to open enroll her students when she, if she wants to continue in the attendance area that she's at. But if we detach property, it's a permanent situation. I mean, we're detaching property, and it will, I think it'll set in place what will happen in that neighborhood as we go forward. So that's my struggle, and that's kind of what I talked about in committee. And in committee, we, like Dan said, we struggled. We didn't, it's a tough one, because, you know, you listen to her case and you, you want to help her, but it, it catapults farther than this.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Tim, can you explain what kind of precedent we would be setting if we said yes to this? Oh, we'll be looking at legal issues down the road if we said yes to this and no to two of the other lots if they come forward five years from now? Is that, is that a legal issue for us?
I, I think it's a matter of consistency. And that's possibly if, any, if any of, any of these in the future would go to appeal, I think the appealing board, the ruling board would look at what the district has practiced, what the practice has been in the past.
All right. Thank you.
Andrea?
I can certainly speak to any legal position. When it comes to differentiating one decision as compared to another, it's always problematic. If you have the same set of criteria, similar circumstances, and coming out, coming out with a different conclusion, then it would be more likely that that decision would be overturned by the governing body.
Okay. Thank you. Bruce?
Yeah. I've been pretty outspoken around open enrollment and the stance that we take here. And, you know, the point that I brought up when we were on our discussion was around, last year, when, you know, I was in, running for school board, there were deliberations around, you know, attaching land and, and taking it from another school district. At the time, it seemed like we weren't, or the board wasn't moving forward with that simply because of the, the space issue we have here. But I thought it was a real good discussion. I mean, listening to her case, I, I mean, it just tears at your heartstrings. And, and living out in the Holton area, I live, you know, I run up in Highland Hills, and I know that area well. And I just run through there and think, man, I can't believe that this is Somerset, when it's literally a mile from my house. And, and there's, you know, some kids that attend Holton out there. So the one point I think that, that is interesting, though, it is permanent. And I, I hadn't really thought about it that way. You know, if it would be something where you could say, you know, for this family, for, you know, the time that they have students, I, to me, if, if I was in your situation, I wouldn't leave Somerset. I would stay where I'm at. I would make sure my kids continue to have their friends and, and, you know, the learning experience that they do, and they're going to have more comfort and joy in that. But the, the situation that we have here with that little pocket, you know, it's difficult to, to make a permanent detachment when the potential for that, to just have that whole area just be gone, and we lose that tax base, is, is a pretty tough situation for us and, you know, for what we have in our community.
Others? Okay. Are we ready to take a motion on this?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would make a motion to deny this change, releasing this lot from the Hudson School District and letting it go to Somerset.
Okay. There's a motion from Sandy, I'm sorry, Sandy, and a second from Dan, to deny the request to detach this lot from the Hudson School District. So there's a motion and a second, motion from Sandy, second from Dan. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, let's take a voice, vote, a vote, and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Point of order?
Yes.
I believe we have to do a roll call vote on this.
Oh, is that right? Doesn't hurt. Okay.
Just filling out this.
Okay. Thank you.
Filling this out, it's asking for a number of yes, a number of no.
Very good.
As the clerk.
Thanks, Brian.
I'm making a point of order.
I appreciate that. And for your reward, you get to start, so.
Bell aye.
Robson aye.
Holland aye.
Hanson aye.
Gruki aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Moving on then, and I do want to correct myself. I'd said earlier that folks from the public can come up and speak about 7B, which they can, but they need to fill out a, a yellow request form before they do that, before we announce this. So I don't think we have anybody. So we'll just move on. So 7B, secondary grade six to 12 space for learning, got authorization to further develop option one to provide additional information for decisions leading to a referendum that includes site, facility construction, remodeling costs. And I guess we'll start with that one, with, with Lynn. And then Lynn will also talk about authorization for Hoffman to analyze and prioritize the ATSNR High School Facilities Recommendations that address aging facility, operations systems. And then we've got a third one, authorization to obtain an appraisal of the Administrative Service Center. So I think we might want to take these individually, yeah. Okay. So let's start with 7B1. Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, as I previously mentioned, the board held a three-hour work session on January 28. And during that work session, the board reviewed the synopsis that Tracy presented tonight of the responses from the survey, another public commentary that was pointed out during the community's work sessions, or community's sessions, and the preference to support further due diligence in pursuing option one. Option one, by way of reminders, to construct a new 10 through 12 school, convert the current high school into grades eight through nine, with the Administrative Services Center moving back to the current high school site, and converting the current middle school into a six, seven building. As a result of that work and the feedback, the board requested that the authorization to further develop option one into the, further due diligence phase be placed on the agenda. And so that's my kickoff. I don't know if anybody has any other comments that they want to make.
Well, before we get to that, let's, I do, we do have some comments from Jamie Johnson, who couldn't be here tonight, and I think Brian has agreed to read those for us. Then we'll go to deliberation. So I'd like to share Jamie Johnson's comments in an email from yesterday. "I regret not being able to attend the meeting, but appreciate the opportunity to provide input into the action items on the agenda related to secondary space for learning. I support further developing additional information regarding option one in order to make decisions regarding a referendum for secondary space. The first and foremost reason is the solid support this option received in the community feedback surveys. It wasn't even close. The community provided a clear mandate for a new high school rather than a second middle school. The outcome did not surprise me, as it merely affirmed what I have heard during my campaign to get elected to the board. The voters recognize the need for more secondary space and to provide that in a cost-effective manner. Now we have to, now we have the need to develop further information about this option, so we can continue to make the progress towards a referendum the community is yearning for. Similarly, I support moving forward with the authorizing Hoffman to prioritize the many recommendations that ATSNR made for addressing the aging facilities at the high school. Finally, I support getting an appraisal of the Administrative Service Center as we look towards consolidating facilities and maximizing the district's assets." Thank you. Thank you, Brian. And so here, here we'll begin the deliberations of the, the board and comments we'd like to hear. Any comments regarding 7B1? Bruce, you going for the mic?
Yeah. You know, just above and beyond reading the comments that we got back from the, the number of surveys that were completed, you know, a continuous resounding, you know, comments, just the, the concern for the sixth graders being with ninth graders. You know, I think that both option two and option three really surrounded that, and that was a, a pretty, you know, raving concern that's, that I hear in the, in the community as well. So, you know, option one, I think out of the three options that we had was, you know, by far and away the, the best option for us to continue exploration on. So, you know, personally, I'm in support of it, and think that, you know, we, we have to keep moving. And we've talked about this, and the, the problems that we have today, and, and that we need to get, you know, consensus from our, our board and consensus from the community as much as we can to move forward with the best option.
Other comments? I think it's important to understand that if we move forward with this option, we're moving forward to further develop, you know, the, the questions around, around this option and focusing on this. We're not ready to go to, to the community with a referendum statement of any kind at this point. So it could change, but we're, we did hear, I think, from the community that this is the direction that they want us to, to go. So just make that comment. Lynn?
Mr. President, I think Bruce said it very well. I think we owe it to the community to honor their commentary and the work that they put into expressing what they wanted to see us do for a solution for secondary space. And we need to enter that second phase of due diligence to be able to research further the costs and the programming, and make sure that it can deliver what we're going to need in a 40-year asset. So I can support option one as well.
Okay. Okay. I, I'm not hearing any other indications of comments. So are we ready to take a motion on, on 7B1? to take a motion on, on 7B1?
Mr. President, I move to authorize the administration to further develop option one to provide additional information for decisions leading to a referendum that includes site, facility, construction, and remodeling costs.
Okay, we have a motion from Lynn. I hope you heard that, Diane?
Second.
A second from Brian. Any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. We'll start with you, Sandy.
Gurkey, no.
Hanson, aye.
Holland, aye?
Robson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Okay, the motion passes. We're moving on then to 7B2, which is authorization for Hoffman to analyze and prioritize the ATSNR High School Facilities Recommendations that address an aging facility operation system. So Lynn, we're going to ask you to kick this off again. Then Tim, some comments?
Mr. President, I, I pretty much cited the reasons in that first one why we are doing this. I mean, these are all tied together. And when you're furthering the development of option one, there are these other actions that need to happen as a result of that and that go hand in hand with that. So, Tim, I don't know if you have anything more to say other than?
Not really, other than, you know, we, it was a pretty comprehensive report that ATSNR did. So I think it's a good next step now to, to go through and prioritize and really look at the things that are needed, the things that should be done, and then the things that are, are really optional. And that's what Hoffman will start to do upon your approval.
You know, I think when we talked about the ATSNR study, we were really challenged a bit with the fact that we didn't know which direction necessarily we were going on a long-term solution with the secondary space needs. And so, now that we're moving towards that, it's logical that we start to, to move closer towards that, you know, those, those solutions for, you know, repair and replacing and creating more efficiency in that building, so.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I, I wonder, we, the report was extremely thorough from ATSNR. And we have a really highly qualified head of maintenance. I have great faith in him. Why would we have to pay Hoffman to prioritize what, the order of things? I think that was in the ATSNR report, wasn't it? The, the way they felt things should be done on the building? Why would we have to pay Hoffman again to do this?
Mr. President?
Lynn?
I guess my way of thinking on that, Sandy, is when you're looking at that recommendation that they gave us, they weren't considering what the future building programming would be or how we're going to use the space. And, you know, if we're furthering and developing option one, that tells us how we're going to be using that building along with that. And, I mean, maybe Tim can clarify more, but if we're talking about moving ASC back there and we're talking about converting that into an eight, nine space, it would go along with, you know, you don't want to double the work. So deciding which of that work and how you would prioritize that along with the building programming for that future use.
Yeah, I, I would, I would second exactly what you're saying, Lynn. The, the report was done without any inkling of saying, this is what it's going to be used, this is what this high school's going to be used for in the future. So it was just done under the guise of, here's the facility, and now we need to tie it together with what the overall plan is going forward. And so I think that's, that's the, really the next step that needs to be done, because there were approximately $36 million in costs that were proposed over, over a longer time period. And we just need to, to look at those a little more in depth.
I'm sure that Jim could, you know, would be involved with this process too, so I would think. Is that true?
Yes, yes, Jim would be involved.
Mary?
Thinking about what would happen with this facility assessment and prioritization, certainly there are some decisions that need to be made. What needs to happen as the building's remodeled and to use it for the next many years, in, as we look at option one, if that's the board's preference, moving forward to a referendum. But essentially, one of the things that Hoffman is going to do and bring back to the board is a budget for this project. And so it will include the construction of a new school. It would include the remodeling of the high school and also options for replacing parts of the HVAC system and so forth. That has to be looked at now in a different way than it was before. But again, we're moving towards a budget that the board can make decisions on for that referendum. So it's much more specific at this point.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Couple of questions. I don't see any associated costs with this. I don't know, am I missing that? Or is this part of the initial analysis that we have already approved earlier in the year?
This will probably be worked into that. As we go through, it just depends on how much more information is needed. But this is, they've done, they've done some cursory summary because they came back and, I think, proposed that 36 million was down to around 27. But I think we could work that into the agreement that we already have with them.
Okay, and my second question is, you know, during our discussion with ATSNR, it seemed as though there, there were some costs that were pretty inflated in there. And for appropriate reasons, I get it. But I think it's also important that, you know, through this analysis, we're going to get a much more refined cost analysis as opposed to some of these 15%, 20% inflated costs that we were seeing at the time, and some potentially even inclusive of inflationary costs. So I presume that, that will be part of this?
Right. The, yeah, the cost that you're, you're referring to is there's always a contingency built in for any of these projects, for unknown and unforeseeable things that can happen. They also had a cost for kind of collateral damage, if you will. So if you go in and do electrical system work, you may be tearing into walls. So it has to, it has to include those costs as well. So there was a formula, and then you're right, they also had costs for inflationary factors built in. So they'll, they'll look at all of those things. But then again, more specifically, getting to a number that's going to support what the overall direction of option one is, and then getting to, you know, tightening up the, the number, the actual budget.
Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Dan?
I was wondering, since we have someone from Hoffman here, Mark, and I'm not sure if he's, you know, that familiar with this particular item on the agenda. But, you know, I think Sandy raises a fair question, and I'm just curious if he would be willing to come and speak to that issue at all?
Are you expecting this, Mark?
No.
Okay, come out to the mic. Your name and address, please. Just kidding. I know, I know, Mary. We're going to put you on the spot.
Is this on? Okay. I'm prob, I am not the best one to answer your particular question. What I can tell you is that I, I think it's been pretty well said already. But it's, it's really important that if we're going to be looking at programming for that particular option, that we look at the, the costs associated with the existing high school relative to that particular option. So, to me, it would go hand in hand. And that we would look at it from a financial standpoint as well as a programming standpoint.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark. Yeah, that's what came to my mind, is that if we're asking an entity to do the programming in this particular facility, it would make sense that they, they would need to look at the components of that facility that are needed based on what that programming might end up being in terms of prioritizing those components related to the programming. That, that was my view of it, so. Any other comments, Dan?
Mr. President? I do recall that there are certain priorities attached to those recommendations. But, and it seemed to me that a lot of the recommendations that were, that were proposed were ones that definitely made sense and that needed to be done. I guess I'm still a little bit hazy on, you know, the relationship between, you know, the programming side versus, you know, not, whether or not we decide yes to do them or not to do them. Is it, would it potentially switch the order of priority?
You know, and I'll just, I'll let Mark, Mark comment on this, but my view was is that their priorities were based on what the, what the facility needed in terms of immediate needs, needs that could be delayed, that type of thing. We're talking about a different priority, set of priorities, based on now, a creation of a program for that facility, not so much what's going to wear out first, or what is, you know, what's most cost-effective to do now, what's got most payback. There's two different, there's two different criteria in my mind, so.
I think the, the other goal here, and I think this has probably already been mentioned too, is to make sure, I mean, safety is a big issue in, in any building. I think we'll, we'll look at it from a perspective of if there's safety issues, those are high priorities. I don't, I personally at our company did not review the ATSNR study because that's not my expertise. So I can't comment specifically on it. But I, I think really that the goal here is to have you, just, it's a refinement. If we would have done the same study that ATSNR did, whatever it was, two years ago, or, we would, we would naturally want to refine that. So I think it's just a necessary step, so you're spending your money wisely in, in the correct order at the right time. That's, it's really just a refinement of, of what was done.
Mr. President?
Yep.
So here's a specific example of something that has to be looked at differently that was in that study. So again, ATSNR was looking at the building as it's used today and moving that forward. So what needs to be done? And this is a little thing, well, the cost of this isn't little, but it was resurfacing the parking lots. Now, if the board approves along the way that it's for an eight, nine building, we don't have drivers, student drivers anymore. And that's a significant cost in this budget. And so that would be at a different level of priority than it was prioritized originally. So it's just an example, that's only one. There are many other ones. But it's, if we're going to build a budget to go forward with a referendum, those kind of things have to be looked at just much more with the use of how this building is going to perform and the program in the building and who's in the building and so forth for the future.
Thanks, Mary. That was a good, a good example, clarification of what I was trying to say. That's good. Like anybody else. Okay, all right. You are dismissed. But don't go very far.
Mr. President, do we have, so do we have a price or not have a price on that?
We don't at this point, is, is what I'd heard. Tim, is that right?
No, I think we're, we're working, working this into the current agreement. So, I mean, the work has been, you know, the work has been done here. But again, when you start to look at the programming, you start to look at remodeling parts of the building, it then will become, things will change. And we need to, we need to look at it in relation to what, what we get, and the programming, and then the final design. So that's what this is getting at.
So I'm just confused on what we're taking action on for this 7B paragraph two. So what is it that we're authorizing if we make this motion?
You're authorizing Hoffman to analyze this report more in depth. They've, they've done a cursory overview of it, but now based on moving forward and looking more seriously at option one, we need to, they need to do more work, more analysis to get down to a number. They've got an estimate, a conceptual estimate of what, where they think the number would come in. But again, that's not based, that's not based on a lot of specifics right now. It's conceptual. So they need to get, they need to get further down and drill further down.
We don't know if it's $5,000 to do that work, or?
It, it can be included in the agreement that we have. But again, it, you know, there's, there's a cost to that. If there are other things that have to be done, potentially there would be a, a charge for something else down the road. But we could, we could probably work this into the agreement right now. The majority of the work's been, been done here. What they need to do is go into it a little more in depth.
So when you say it could be included in the agreement, Tim, you're indicating that the, the budgeted number of the month, number in that agreement would, would include this work? Is that what you're saying? And with possible some exceptions if something's discovered?
Right. If there's, if there's more analysis that has to be done, if it's something out of the ordinary, there could possibly be charges. I, you know, it's, it's pretty hard for me to tell you exactly what that would be. But, you know, it's, it's really the next step that you have to, you have to go forward with.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I appreciate what Tim is saying, that the money to pay for Hoffman to do this is included in the existing agreement, whatever. I can't remember what the, 70,000 or whatever that figure was. But if you think of it like this, a company like Hoffman, if we pay them $70,000 to do work for us, they're calculating their hours that they're working for us against that 70,000. If they do this additional work, they're going to count it against that 70,000, which Tim is saying, so it isn't going to cost us anything right now. But in the end, when the 70,000 is used up, we will be paying extra dollars for some services of Hoffman after their 70,000 is used up. If we use five or 10,000 of that 70 for this. I just want that to be clear, that he's making it sound like it's in the contract and we're not going to be charged for it. But we will ultimately end up paying for it.
A motion can be made also that could be, to accept this under the condition that it's within the contract. And if it goes outside the contract, you know, it could be revisited as well. Bruce?
So, I mean, the money's important. I think we've always had a pretty good deliberation around whether or not money needs to be spent. But let's say that we, you know, go through this entire exercise, we have, you know, a plan in place for option one, we have land that we're going to bring forward, and we don't even look at the existing high school and what needs to be done there, or the new plan that may be in place for the eight, eight, nine. And then we have to come back later and explain to the community that, you know, we didn't, we didn't explore this and there's additional cost here because, you know, this wasn't something we took into consideration when we were going through our process. Just like we don't know whether or not option one's going to be the final, final that's brought forward for referendum, you know, it's still a step in the process, I think. I, I don't think it's, you know, asking Hoffman to go back and redo ATSNR's report. It's just really to go back and say, okay, if we had this in an eight, nine building, what are the most important things for us to do? Are there anything from a safety perspective that we need to look at? I don't know how many hours it's going to take, but I don't think it's a step that we would skip in the process. I guess, you know, it's, it's, it's a part of the process that we need to get all the answers to, to make a definitive decision as a group.
Okay. Other comments?
So again, another example, and, and I don't know the specifics exactly, and Tim can probably fill this in. But there are recommendations within this report that we proceed with examinations of our roofs at a higher level. There's another one about looking at our pipes as well. And that would take more resources to do that, and there would be a cost. And I'm thinking those are the things that we're talking about if there's additional cost involved.
Right. If we, that's right. There are some, there are parts of this report with recommendations to do things that may align, align with what option one is calling for. But again, anybody who does these reports will tell you, like, like you say, there are contingencies built in because they can't see under, you can't see in the ground. We haven't run cameras through sewer pipes, et cetera. So we just don't, you just don't know what you're going to encounter. So if that occurs, then they would have to go into more depth to find out. And then there could be additional cost.
Okay. Are we ready to call?
We've just spent a lot of time. I was just trying to get a ballpark. It's a couple hours, you know, because, so I want to limit in some ways. I mean, we're voting on it, you know, like, you know, it would have been good to have at least some ballpark. It's about five hours of work, or 10 hours of work, right? So.
Okay. Are we ready to call the question? Your motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize for Hoffman to analyze and prioritize the ATSNR High School Facilities Recommendations that address aging facility operation systems.
Okay, there's a motion by Bruce. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion by Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. No discussion. We'll start down with Brian.
Bell eye.
Sure no eye.
Robson eye.
Holland eye.
Hanson eye.
And Gurkey, no.
Okay. Motion passes. Um, seven, three, authorization to obtain an appraisal of the Administrative Services Center. Okay, Lynn, one more time, huh?
Mr. President, this is just another further step in that due diligence phase to support option one. Tim, I don't know if you have any more information to add than that, but, um, you know, the, part of that option one does include the relocation of the Administrative Services Center back to the existing high school and, um, obtaining a number for selling that facility.
I don't have anything else to add to that one.
That's good. Okay. Any other deliberation or questions about this one?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Uh, even though I am not in favor of the first two that we voted on, I'm going to vote yes on this because I believe it's important. Um, I think I asked Mary when the last appraisal was done on that facility, and it was done when it was purchased. So I think it's important for the district to establish a value for it.
Mm-hmm.
Whether or not it's part of anything else, I think it's important to establish a value for it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for this, for seven B, paragraph three.
Make a motion to authorize to obtain an appraisal of the Administrative Services Center.
Motion by Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a voice vote. Um, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're moving then to seven C, uh, and Andrea, we're just going to move right to you on this one. Two thousand and fourteen, fifteen staffing criteria, if you could cover that for us.
Okay. Um, well, as you said, we are now considering planning for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year, and what that means in terms of our staff. And as part of that process, we look at criteria that we will be considering as we're making decisions going forward. That criteria are identified here, they include, um, and this is our administrative recommendation to you, that they include the following. The implementation of HSD 2025 as planned, continue efforts to improve the system for higher student achievement, maintain class size guidelines where applicable and possible, realign staff and resources through reallocation, reorganization, and/or reduction based on priorities and needs, provide operations to support high quality and continuous improvement efforts, add staff for enrollment growth or HSD 2025 implementation, or prioritize student need only when reallocation of resources and staff position realignment is insufficient, use staff attrition where possible when positions are reduced or eliminated, legal requirements, and then finally, the implementation of high school learning for the future. So that is our administrative recommendation for the criteria to be used when we're considering two thousand and fourteen, fifteen staff planning.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea. Any questions or comments regarding the recommendation?
Mr. President, we reviewed this in committee and supported the criteria.
And that was personnel?
Yes.
Those personnels reviewed that and, uh, support this recommendation. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept this recommendation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen staff planning administrative recommendation.
Okay. Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Sandy. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our last action item, uh, other than the consent, is the superintendent's, uh, Assistant Superintendent Contract. Mary?
Uh, Board members, I'm very pleased this evening to recommend David Grambo be promoted to the position of Assistant Superintendent for System Improvement, starting July 1st, 2014. Uh, Mr. Grambo has proven himself to be a visionary, adept, and well-respected leader in our school district. He is dedicated and committed to advancing the district's strategic vision, HSD 2025. And we're very fortunate to have a leader of his caliber among us for this promotion. He started in the district in nineteen ninety-five. He was a classroom teacher at EP Rock and moved, um, into the position of special ed teacher. He has been a principal, an elementary principal at Willow River, Associate Director of Learning Services with district-wide, um, role, and then his current job of System Improvement Director. In his new role with your approval, um, he would be providing leadership to support the work of teaching, learning, and leadership in each of our schools, and an expanded role at the district level. One of the, um, areas that he will be focusing on will be elevating and expanding the use of technology as a resource for learning, and, uh, there will be more coming forward at a future board meeting in regard to that. Um, he has certainly primary responsibility to lead the advancement of technology. Um, and then pending your approval this evening, uh, his current position as System Improvement Director will be eliminated July 1, and then he, it would be replaced with this new position, Assistant Superintendent of System Improvement.
Okay. We have the recommendation before us, so are there any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. Uh, you know, I've been on the board now, coming up on a year, I guess. Uh, you know, been very impressed, Mr. Grambo, with your professionalism and the work that you've done here, uh, just how you've handled situations, how you present. And frankly, I'm impressed with a, a lot of the, uh, administrative staff and, and the principals that we get a chance to interact with and the ideas and solutions that they bring. So I think it's great, and I think it's well deserved, so support it.
Thank you, Bruce. I would echo also the fact, and this thought came through my mind, that, uh, we've got a, I think, a tremendous administrative team. And, uh, of course, Dave Grambo is a, certainly a star in that group, so we sure, uh, do appreciate all that he's done, as well as the rest of the administrative team. I'm just very, I think we're fortunate to have a, a stronger team as we've got. So, any other questions or comments? Anybody opposed? No. Okay. I'll entertain a motion, uh, for this recommendation.
Mr. President, move to approve the Assistant Superintendent Contract to Mr. Grambo. Well deserved.
Okay. So the recommendation is to promote David Grambo to the position of Assistant Superintendent.
Second.
For System Improvement, starting July 1st, 2014. Is that okay by, is that acceptable?
I appreciate that clarification, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion by Lynn and an anxious second at the end of the table there. All right. Uh, all in favor, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Congratulations, David.
Congrats.
Thank you very much. Did you want to make a speech or anything?
I would.
All right.
[laughing]
Okay. All right, we'll move then to consent, uh, items, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items with a specific language around, uh, the, um, the financials, revenues and expenditures.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,641,116 and 87 cents.
Okay, there's a motion by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. I just want to note that, uh, we have a number of retirees as a part of this action tonight, and we'd like to, um, make special mention of that, and Andrea's going to do that for us.
Yes, and it's certainly a bittersweet opportunity. Um, looking at the number of retirees, we have seven certified staff retirements, um, that are, uh, being approved. And of those seven teachers, we have 200-plus years in the district, which I think is pretty incredible. Uh, one of the retirees, Max Hanson, is a longtime school counselor at Hudson Prairie, has been with the district 37 years. And last year, 2013, he was Wisconsin Elementary Counselor of the Year. Then there's Mary Henneker, she has been with the district 19 years. She's a reading teacher specialist at Rivercrest, uh, has served in multiple buildings. Laura Ida, um, she is from EP Rock, she's been with the district 15 years and is a fourth grade teacher there. Steve Cosman, he's, uh, been with the district 35 years and is a high school math teacher. And I learned that he actually, in his earlier years, coached tennis for the district. Uh, Craig Lewis, also a high school teacher, he's an English teacher, 34 and a half years, so hired in 1980. Uh, and he, as part of his English, uh, teaching background, uh, he was also, been to state a number of times in forensics, and was active in debate and drama as well. Linda Rose is at North Hudson, uh, she has been at the district 24 years, and is currently teaching kindergarten at North Hudson, and of her 24 years, 22 have been at North Hudson. And then Deb Schutz, uh, 35 years, um, at the district, uh, currently at Rivercrest in the second grade, and was hired back in 1979. So I think that's, um, incredible to have 200-plus years' experience in the district for those certified staff. In addition, we also have a, a, a media assistant from Rivercrest, uh, Luanne Schmidt, who's been at the district 15 years, who will be retiring this year as well.
Thank you, Andrea. It sure seems to be a testimony to a strong district when we have staff that stay as long as they do in one, one place. So I think that's a, I think that's a tremendous attribute, a tremendous accolade for the district as well. And congratulations to all those retirees, so. Uh, we're going to move on then to the...
Nope, there's something.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I apologize. Mary, you want to introduce a new staff member?
I do. And, um, you will remember that, um, reluctantly, we have accepted Diane Radell's, um, intent to retire at the end of the school year, and certainly, I, I can't think of her being replaced. Um, but we have posted the position, looking forward to the future for her and wishing her well, and had three internal candidates. And from those internal candidates, we were very fortunate to select Tim Minor, and I would encourage him to come up to the microphone, uh, say a few more things, so you can meet him. And, um, when Tim went through this process, um, we were very impressed with a number of things, and I'll just highlight a couple of those. Certainly his commitment to the district, his organizational skills, he's a problem solver, he's very articulate, and you'll see that in a minute.
[laughing]
No pressure, Tim.
No pressure.
Um, he builds connections between students and staff, or connections with students and staff and parents, and he's willing to step in wherever he's needed, um, to help out in the district. He has served as a teacher aide in the district, and most recently, um, starting in 2008, as an administrative assistant at North Hudson, and then he was promoted into the role in 2011 of Secretary of, to the principal at North Hudson Elementary. So we're very pleased that, um, Tim has been selected for this position and this promotion. And Tim?
Thank you, Mary. I hope I can live up to those expectations, and I apologize, I've been spending more time paying attention to Diane tonight than you guys, so I, I don't mean to be slighted, but I am very excited and, uh, look forward to, uh, doing what I can to fill in in Diane's shoes. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yep.
Quick comment. You forgot, uh, active Holton Parent Association member as well.
Should have been at the top of the list.
That's right. Well done.
Yep. Good. Very good. We'll miss you, Diane, so, and welcome aboard, Tim. All right, now, committee reports. We'll start with Finance Committee, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Finance Committee met, um, what was the date of that?
February 3rd.
Okay, February 3rd. And, uh, the agenda items for that meeting were the 2014, 15 preliminary budget overview. We didn't spend a lot of time with that simply because, you know, it's, we're very early in the process. Um, and, uh, so there's quite a bit that goes into that before we can develop and refine the budget, one of which is, you know, that important ingredient called state aid. And, uh, we won't really have any good, um, ideas of what that's going to be about until, once we get into the summer, and of course, uh, the final, um, state aid, uh, numbers don't come in until October. Um, the next item was advancing, advancing HSD 2025 innovation with Technology One-to-One Proposal. And it was really surprising, we did this without Brian. So we, we, we...
I've been involved.
So, so I handled the technology piece without him, and, uh, we, no, I, actually it was Dave Grambo that, that did most of the discussion, but it was, it was really a fascinating discussion. And just to see that we're moving forward with some definite planning to, uh, integrate more technology into our schools and classrooms, especially at the secondary level, is exciting. Um, and in fact, you know, one of the, um, things that we had talked about is, you know, that we, we had a plan, I think over a period of four, four, four years, and I think some of the conversation within the committee was, you know, is there a possibility that we could look at accelerating that? So I think there's a lot of energy and excitement around that piece. Um, and of course, you know, this all has to fit into our budget and finances, but, you know, the, the cost of technology continues to come down, and it makes it more and more feasible for, uh, large school districts like Hudson, Hudson to be able to look at integrating this into our schools and curriculum. Um, then lastly, uh, we had the conversation about the Beasley petition that we've already talked about. I'll field just about any questions.
Any questions?
Unless they get too technical.
You have Brian here, and Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. We'll move on then to Learning and Program Development Committee meeting. Bruce?
Uh, thank you. So you hit one of the topics. Uh, in this discussion, we also did have, uh, conversations around the advancement of the technology and the one, the one proposal. Um, we were, I, I echo the fact that we had some real good comments there, and, and certainly pushed a little bit. I, I was channeling Brian as much as I could, uh, make sure that we accelerate that. Uh, but, uh, was, was real appreciative of the work that's continued to be done there. Um, we had, uh, also talked a little bit about, um, some comments that were brought up just, uh, around teaching through the last day of school and the importance of, um, ensuring that while kids are in the class, that, you know, they're, they're getting the, um, the full attention, uh, and the education there. I don't think that, um, was any one specific action other than, uh, reiteration, you know, and ensuring that, um, that the focus is there, um, through, uh, through the last and, and complete day. Um, we had a, a, a real hearty discussion around student wellness, and I, I had some fun with that. You know, we had a couple folks come in and, and, uh, share with us some of the work that they're doing in, uh, in the schools, uh, in, in the elementary levels, and really working to, uh, continue to educate our children about, you know, healthy lifestyles and, and, uh, you know, eating appropriately, et cetera. Um, you know, asked the question during our discussion, you know, how do we measure up against others in, in, uh, you know, surrounding districts? And I think the feedback was that, you know, we're certainly way ahead of, uh, of what we're seeing out there, and, and that's the feedback that our, uh, administrative staff is getting when they're out, um, sharing these ideas elsewhere. Uh, also, we, we did get a little, um, pitch for some of the activities that are being done up in, in Holton right now with, uh, the Master Gardener that participates up there, and, and some of the results that we get from, uh, the continuous education. So, a lot of fun, and certainly commend the work that's being done around, uh, driving healthy, uh, lifestyles.
Thank you, Bruce. Any questions, uh, for this report, Learning and Program Development? Okay, moving on, Lynn, Personnel Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, February 4th. We discussed and voted on earlier under the Topics for Action, the 2014, 15 Staffing Criteria that Andrea reviewed. We also, um, reviewed and gave input on Policy Number 2230, which is the evaluation of the Superintendent of Schools. Um, basically, the revision which we voted on in the consent items was just some minor modifications to make the dates and the deadlines, um, basically match what our existing practice is, and to mirror what we're doing and how we handle that, as well as, there was some discussion around the language about, um, whether or not a written evaluation should be required every year. And, um, there was some good discussion on that, but basically what we agreed to do was to make sure the language was flexible enough in the case where, for instance, if you had an interim superintendent, you know, would you necessarily want to give them a written evaluation when they wouldn't be continuing on in that role? So, it was some good discussion, and we revised that policy based on... So it was some good discussion, and we revised that policy based on kind of our existing practice. And then we talked about the annual superintendent evaluation planning and kind of the format that we've used, which is a very comprehensive format, and the committee voted and reviewed what we've done in the past and agreed to move that forward in this evaluation year as well. And then we adjourned to closed session.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions of Personnel Committee? Okay, hearing none, then I'll accept a motion to adjourn to closed session with a specific language that's identified in number nine.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, par n1, par nE, deliberating for negotiation, negotiating the purchase and sale of property.
Okay, a motion by Bruce, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Sandy.
Gerke, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Robson, aye.
Bell, aye.
We adjourned. Thank you for coming, participating in tonight's meeting.